I'd like to call over the Penn Trafford School District Superintendent's Informational Committee meeting of March 6, 2017 at 7:00 PM. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with special reports. Career Tech, Mr. Petrusi.
Mr., excuse me, Mr. President. Says we have a voting. I'm going to take a roll, please. Yes. Mrs. Issing.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Materazzo.
Here.
Mr. Newell is absent. Mr. Neiman.
Here.
Mr. Petrusi.
Here.
Mr. Stovar.
Here.
You have a board, Mr. President.
Thank you. You're welcome. As I stated, we'll go right into special reports with Career Tech and Mr. Petrusi. And before I go into Career Tech, I just want to, first of all, thank the entire school district for being so cooperative from the traffic recreation board office that we just had. Starts with Dr. Harris on Don, Mr. Inglaze, Mr. Legos involved, and Mr. Bracco, especially Mr. Bracco, and Dickie, the head custodian at Trafford Schools, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Napoli. Just worked out excellent and for the benefit of the kids, new $122,000 playground going in and down to Trafford Fairmont Avenue. I hope it works out real well. We're in the process now with Mr. Knowles. Help me out, George Knowles and the Choose Architect engineer. George, you thinking too? Knowles?
Morris Knowles.
Morris Knowles, there you go. Got the first name. All right, Morris Knowles. And the bids should be going, I hope they go out by end of April and get them rolling. But end up doing $8,600 worth and went very well. Well organized, some great volunteers. It worked very well. Mr. Leonard's a regular down there now. Him and his daughter come down, the beautiful granddaughter.
Son.
Grandson, sorry. Okay. Didn't want to blow that one. But anyway, he kept on coming to me. He said, "All I've got left is two square feet." And he sent him one square foot and this vehicle and all stuff out. And I told his daughter and she says, "He's going to make me walk home because I keep on buying stuff where there's no place to put it." But it was, it worked out real well. Eighty-six, thirty-six, but we still had $260 outstanding. And our treasurer, Rose Flynn, she plans on, if it doesn't come in shortly, go to magistrate the, one of them walked out in pair of bill yet, but when we get everything done, it's $8,600. That's probably the third highest we've had in our auction. And I just want to thank everybody and it just worked out very well. Okay, on the, on Career Tech, our meeting was on February 15th. We, Dr. Kerr was there in attendance for, every superintendent, there's nine superintendents with, for nine months a year. They're going to all plan on coming one at a time to help us go through anything they want to be brought up, like last time with the, they wanted dean of students, we wanted assistant principal, but this, everybody will be on top of things right now and hopefully they keep on coming in. Automotive class, they won first place in the state. They're now going to the nationals in April in New York City. The cosmetology, they are headed for Chicago for a weekend, $10,000 it's going to cost them. They raised all the money themselves. At March 26th to 28th, the cosmetology class instructor, Caitlin Youngstead, she's going to take the whole class to the cosmetology nationals. And on the April 19th to 21st, there's a skills contest also for cosmetology and it's students financed, I said, $10,000. And they goody packages, I haven't given you a goody package lately, anyone to mess with that, but these kids, they went nuts this time. Marinated cube cheese, Swiss provolone, bacon blue cheese dip, meat and cheese tray, relish tray, crab quiche, black bean, and feta salad, broccoli salad, pasta salad, apple dip, chocolate chip, brown sugar, bacon romaine, sweet red pepper pizza, pizza pinwheels, bacon ranch dip with pita wedge and tortilla chips, crab dip with pita wedge and tortilla chips, and tortilla party pinwheels. It was, it was like it was Christmas time. And the Christmas banquet will be discussed more in detail this coming, I'm still trying to increase the attendance. All the work those kids did and 30 people showed up, I still have a hard time handling that one. Okay, our next meeting is the 15th, not this Wednesday, but the following Wednesday. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Prior to the meeting, we held an executive session. We discussed policies, real estate, and buildings, and maintenance, curriculum, and personnel. So I'll go into information and hand the meeting over to Dr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Stovar. First up is our favorite type of time of the year, and it's the student's of the month. And we're going to start with our elementary student of the month, and we're going to call Mr. Morasty.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. I'd like to introduce the elementary student of the month from McCullough, 4th grader Matthew Schmater. Matthew, if you'll come on up. You can pick a block. Or you can come over here. You can hide back there. You're good. Come on over here. You're fine, right there. Yeah, right there. You don't have to talk to me. Matthew is the son of Jacob and Patty Schmater. Matthew has a sister, Emily, who's sitting in the back just as quiet as ever, I think, hiding. And she's a 3rd grade student at McCullough. When speaking with Matthew's parents, they informed me that he's like an old soul, just an extremely happy kid and enjoys everything. He loves to play soccer and hanging out with friends. It is common for him to be playing Xbox when he's not playing soccer. As a matter of fact, he's kind of an Xbox fanatic, mom said. Speaking with Matthew's sister, Emily, she said they get along sometimes and then sometimes not. Emily mentioned that Matthew likes Xbox a lot as well. And when asked if there was something that she really wanted me to know about Matthew, Emily kind of sat there like she is now, grinned, and said, "No." Speaking with Matthew's teachers, they stated that Matthew is not only a great student, but an all-around great kid. Matthew is a hard worker and always gives his best effort. He is cooperative and works well with all the students. Matthew always participates in class. If he is even ever unclear about something, he is sure to ask for help. Students and teachers enjoy being around Matthew as well because he is nice to everyone that he meets. Speaking with Matthew, he said he likes math and reading the most in school, enjoys solving problems and reading books. Outside of school, Matthew stated he likes to play soccer as well as Xbox. Often he plays Xbox online with his McCullough classmates. He also enjoys his pet cats Stretch and Mickey. Matthew's hard work, cooperatives, and kindness to all that he meets has made him the ideal student for this award.
I'd like to congratulate Matthew Schmater on being the elementary student of the month. Matthew has a certificate for you?
Mr. Morasty, what's going on at McCullough?
It's actually been quite a busy month between Spirit Week, Dr. Seuss, assemblies, PSSA prep that's kicking in now, a continued focus on the guided reading and K-2 math meetings coming up here later this week to discuss where they are in the timeline, the eligible content, as well as PSSA prep grouping, flexible grouping. We had St. Vincent's Prevention Projects in today. It's been very busy. And I don't want to say it's getting to be crunch time, but it's getting to be crunch time as the PSSAs start to roll in place.
Are you going to have to work hard because what were your last shot of 1,551 schools?
We're in the top 50.
In 43, perhaps?
Yeah.
Top 3%?
Correct.
Keep it up, that's impressive.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, for our student of the month, we have Penn Middle School Principal, Mr. Jim Simpson.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Kylie, will you come forward? I want to introduce Kylie Reese as the middle school student of the month from Penn Middle School. She's the daughter of Brian and Kelly Reese. And she has an older brother, Mason. He's a freshman at the high school. Her parents report that she's a typical teen, silly, spontaneous, loves her dogs, and is always on her phone. Usually that phone is connected to some earbuds, which are part of her daily wardrobe. She's a hard worker, very focused on what she does, homework, volleyball, inline skating, and she's always looking for a way to improve. Her parents love her and respect her for challenging herself so often. She's not only willing, but also excited to go outside her comfort zone to reach for those stars. Her smile brightens up every room she enters. That smile is truly a glimpse of her internal light. She's such a compassionate, caring, gentle soul. She's always putting other feelings ahead of her own, repeated many times by the teachers also. She shows the same compassion when playing with her young cousin or helping in a nursing home resident plate bingo. Her brother Mason says they fight sometimes, but overall they get along pretty good. And I think he was telling the truth when I asked him. We go outside together and help each other practice volleyball and soccer, which I find, he's a soccer player, Kylie's a volleyball player, and they go out and help each other out. That's great. Mason admires her hardworking attitude and says she's kind to other people, no matter who they are, and she never excludes anybody. Her teachers say that she is a student that every teacher wants in their class. She is a very smart, hardworking, outgoing young lady who strives to the best she can be. Along with these qualities, Kylie is one of the most polite, well-mannered young ladies I've ever taught. I've never seen her have a bad day. She's just a total, complete student person. It's a pleasure having her in class. She's the type of kid who not only wants to do well on tests and does very well, but actually wants to understand the material she's learning. She's an innate drive and thirst for learning. Her work ethic is second to none. She's a great leader and remains humble and takes direction well. Kylie's an absolute joy to have in class and on the morning announcements, says Mr. Steele. A number of her teachers, as we talked about Kylie winning this award there, there's nobody who deserves it more. So Kylie, congratulations.
And what's going on at the school, Mr. Simpson?
Well, Dr. Harris, we, February, we had a career fair for all the 8th graders. And this is, used to be just having speakers come in, you know, a lawyer, a doctor, a teacher, you know, whatever the case may be, an engineer, and talk to students. But now with the help of the credit union, it's a reality experience. The kids get a fictitious job and they get an amount of money and they have to budget and go to rent and auto and cellphone and entertainment and food. So it's a very worthwhile experience. Want to thank the counselors, Megan McGraw, Megan Sherman, or Linnea Sherman, and the credit union because they bring, you know, dozens of people to help with this. So it's a great experience for our 8th graders as they get prepared to move to the high school. We also celebrated Andy R. Word Day, which is a day to celebrate students with intellectual disabilities. We are recognized by the, recently by the Westmoreland County Commissioners for our life skills program. I want to thank Mr. Karazia for his support there. Without him, we would not be able to flourish as we have there. Upcoming, we have the Field of Power Assembly, which is a character and self-respect assembly featuring Rich Pritikin. Our PTO clubs will be finishing up this year formally, but things like drama will go on until May. And as Mr. Morasty mentioned, we have something next month called the PSSA. We're, it's in the back of our mind. Thank you, Dr. Harris.
All right, thank you. And finally, for the student of the month, we have from the high school, Mr. Quilla.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. If Lindsey could come up here, please. All right, the high school student of the month for March is senior Lindsey Johnston. Lindsey comes off as shy, but when she's engaged in conversation, she is robust and passionate about her thoughts. She's been part of the National Honors Society for two years, showing her excellence in academics. She's also a past Nobel Warrior recipient, demonstrating the characteristics that are expected of a model student. As her athleticism doesn't go unnoticed, she has also placed in multiple cross-country invitational meets. Outside of school, she's active in church, donates time to local food banks and Meals on Wheels. She also loves participating in the Westinghouse Science Honors Institute. In addition to all of this, she still finds time to devote hours, countless hours, to the Drama Guild, which I think we could say her parents do as well. It's a family function, we appreciate that.
I think they spend more hours than maybe she does.
We look forward to seeing her perform in the upcoming musical, Legally Blonde. After graduating, she plans on attending college and majoring in chemical engineering. Some of the things her teachers have said about her, her AP Physics C teacher, Mr. Tusek. Lindsey is a very hard worker that never settles for a good enough understanding of how the world works. She pushes herself to complete assignments before their deadline so that she has the opportunity to clarify concepts that may be confusing. She is courteous to her classmates by sharing her understanding of the topics that she herself may have struggled with in the beginning. Lindsey's drive for a complete understanding of the world is a quality that sets her apart. Her AP Government Politics teacher, Mrs. Smith, says, "As a person, Lindsey is kind, compassionate, and honest. As a student, she's dedicated, conscientious, and acquisitive. Among the things I love most about having her in class are the thoughtful questions that she asks. Lindsey can always be counted on, both during class and after, to begin or continue a wonderful conversation about the material that we're learning. She connects everything to current events and is constantly thriving for more information and loves to satisfy this curiosity. It's very inspiring to me to have a student like her in my class." And finally, her Calc II teacher, Mrs. Brugman. This is the second year that I've had Lindsey in class, so I really knew that she was a patient and hardworking student. But this year, I was able to see her in her action as a peer tutor. Lindsey shows patience with the students that is unmatched. While I'm sure she gets frustrated at times, she never lets it show when the students that she's helping are around. Lindsey not only helps them understand the material, she also helped several students create study guides, work on study skills, and quizzes them on all of the material. She also hunts them down the next day to ask them how they did and their test went and celebrates when they do well. And usually, she seems a little more excited than the students that actually took the test when she finds out the results. This is both encouraging and complimentary to the students. As you know, we started a peer tutoring program this year, and it's students like Lindsey that really made it be a success. Congratulations, Lindsey. You made us very proud being student of the month for the high school. Congratulations.
And before we take a press photo with the kids, what is going on at the high school, Mr. Quilla?
This Wednesday, as Mr. Jim Simpson said, we have a reality fair here as well at the high school for all the juniors. Thank you for the, the Westmoreland Credit Union for putting the sign. All the juniors will be going around to different stations, brought upon by the businesses throughout the community. Obviously, the big thing is our musical, Legally Blonde, at the end of March and early April. Spring sports did start today. A couple of classes have done some cultural things. French club and classes celebrated Mardi Gras this past month. And this Thursday, the math teachers here at the high school are hosting all the Westmoreland County math teachers and principals to a quarterly meeting for math sharing and feedback on how to best teach and instruct mathematics. And a lot of those teachers will be touring some of our facility and see some of our teachers in action. It's going to be pretty busy, and we too will be getting into crunch time with the keystones and all the other state mandated items. It's been a good month.
And one other thing, I know you attended on Saturday. I kind of went up and watched the kids practice during the day, your premiere concert. I just got some for the board.
Yeah, we had Jim Casella from Portland, Oregon, who came here, actually composed a piece for our percussion ensemble to actually have a worldwide premiere of this musical selection. The kids did a fantastic job performing it. He did a great job working with the kids throughout the day preparing for this, but it was a great experience for the kids. It's great to have a professional come in, a well-known professional come in. He's done lots of different, composed lots of music for movies, commercials, and everything else. So it was a great experience for the kids and all of the, all of the band, because not just percussion, but all of them.
I also thank Mr. Materazzo because you attended as well, so thanks for coming up. At this time, we're going to take a photo with the student of the month winners.
Student representative, union representative, Mr. Trent Soms.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. I have a couple of announcements. Our community movie night that we've been planning will feature Moana and Fantastic Beast, and that will be on April 29th. I think the time is still to be determined, and I will have more detailed information coming up. We're setting up a big projector down on the football field. We're going to have like Chinese, a Chinese auction, and it's going to be really fun, food. So definitely consider coming.
Are they going to, that's what I was trying, are there people who come? How are they going to sit in the stands or?
Where are you going to project?
I think, I think we're hanging it.
That's what I was wondering.
I think we're hanging it on the goalpost. So, so I think people are sitting just on the field on blankets. Because I don't think they want, I don't know if they want chairs down there. I think there was a discussion about that. I'm not really quite sure. I'm on the baskets committee and my sister, so I'm not in on that other side.
What type of baskets do you have in Trent?
You know what? My sister's also on the committee, so that's just messing that up. I also wanted to make an inquiry. Last month, you said that the, your copy of the Student Bill of Rights would be prepared for March. Are we going to have a meeting or how do we want to do this?
Our solicitor will, here's our solicitor now.
Right on cue.
Trent was just asking about the, he gave us something from Mike Brungo to look at.
Yes, Mr. Brungo is still reviewing that. He expects to have something to report back next month.
Next month?
Next week. Next week.
Okay, I was about to say, like, I'll, you know, I'm going to graduate soon, so we got to, we got to get this. Okay.
I'll make sure that he keeps it on the top of his pile.
Okay, that sounds good. And then I assume we're just going to have a meeting of members of the board and the student union or?
We're waiting to hear back from our solicitor as to, you know, what any issues might be with it and then discuss it administratively, what course of action to take from there. And then I think after next week, we'll know what to do and then we'll be in touch with you.
Okay, sounds good. Were there any questions for me?
Also, with Mr. Quilla's input too, when we get the information for the meeting.
I have a question for you about the traffic. Is everybody doing good now?
So, I, you know, I haven't been there in the mornings, but I haven't heard anything bad, so.
I want to say, you spotlighted that. You deserve a lot of credit for that. You spotlighted and made some, made some people make some kind of adjustment. I saw, read the write-up in a paper from Chief Wado, and your name should have been in there.
Well, thank you. I'll make sure to get a gauge from the student union, see what they think about it, but I'm sure that this is.
You had, you was very influential, and hats off to you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
I do know, I'll add to that, Trent, that out of about 420-some cars that come into the main entrance, there's approximately 125 that use that Warrior Center. So 25% of that traffic is now off that road and into the Warrior Center. Big chunk.
Awesome. Cool. All right.
All right, thanks, Trent.
Thank you.
Next one, turn over, Mr. Lego.
Okay, with us tonight, we have our local auditors who've performed our annual review. We have Brian Cruchel and Alexis Lawler from Zelenkovsky and Axelrod. Each of you received a copy of the audit report and the single audit. So they're going to review those results with you. They'll answer any questions that you have, and we'll approve the report next week barring any unforeseen circumstances. So I turn it over to you guys.
Hi, I'm Brian, this is Alexis. And you have the two reports in front of you. The bigger one is the audited financial statements. And then the smaller one's just a single audit report. That's the compliance report, mostly with federal programs, but there are some internal control matters in there we'll get to. We're going to start with the big one first, the financial statements. And if you flip to the first page after the table contents, that's our independent auditor's report. And we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements this year, and that's the best audit report we can issue. That means there were no, we believe the financial statements were materially accurate in all material respects. We found no instances to make us think that they were misstated in any way. There were a couple of control findings, which we'll get to in a minute when we get to the smaller report, but there were no problems with the financial statements as a whole. There wasn't any big new changes this year. Last year when we were here, we had the new pension standards that made the statements a lot different from years past. Those are still in effect, but they weren't, there's not any big changes from the prior year. Page four starts your management discussion and analysis. This is kind of just a summary from year to year of what changed from 2015 to 2016. If you look through page four, you'll see, once you get to page seven or eight, maybe. Page eight just starts explaining the fund, financial statements, your different funds. And then page nine is actually a summary of activity for the government-wide statements. These are the statements that are the school district as a whole. So this is your, includes all your capital assets and your debt and everything. Those aren't particularly useful because they're going to have a $78 million liability for unpaid pension liabilities that make your financial statements look a little worse than they really are, but that's a long-term liability. That doesn't affect your general fund or your day-to-day operations, but it does affect you. If you go to page 11, or no, page, I'm sorry, page 12, that's where your capital assets are. And then page 13 is those long-term debt liabilities. And you can see down at the bottom there, you have $29 million in general obligation bonds outstanding. That's not what really makes the government-wide statements weird, it's the $78 million down there on the pension line. And that's just retiree pensions that will need paid if the school district will. Page 14 is your, this is where it starts the governmental funds. So this is governmental funds in total. So this includes general fund and capital projects. And you'll see the revenues up there were $51 million this year and $50 million last year. You had an increase of about $500,000. That was due to the tax mileage increase up to the index last year. And then down at the bottom of the page is your expenditures. You actually increased almost $2 million from 2015 to 2016, and it was mostly salary and pension related. And a lot of that, a lot of the pension is really out of your control. That's just what the state tells you, you have to pay. Page 15 is the government fund balances. And you can see the general fund decreased by about $500,000 from 2015 to 2016, and that was because the expenditures were a little higher due to the pension and salary. You still have $4 million in fund balance, which isn't bad. It's about 8% of your current year expenditures. Around 10% is usually the benchmark we use when we look at financial statements. Eight's not bad. You're above five. If you were below five, I'd say you're probably in danger. But you're not. You're right around 8% of current year expenditures. Page 17 starts the actual financial statements. This is more detail of what we just went through in the summary. This is more detail of what we just went through in the summary. Page 19 is where you can see the balance sheet for the general fund, and that's where the fund balance is listed down there at the bottom, $4 million. And then page 21 is the income statement for the governmental funds, and you can see that's the general fund there. You can see the $500,000 decrease in fund balance down there at the bottom. Page 23 is your business-type activities, that's your cafeteria fund. There wasn't a lot of change from year to year last year for this one from 15 to 16. There will be some changes this year, obviously, since the federal, your grant revenue's gonna go down, because you're no longer part of the federal lunch program, but you're operating. Your receipts are gonna go up. So I think it'll, you lost about $60,000 last year. It looks like you're on track to maybe do a little bit better than that for the 16, 17 school year. Page 26 is just your agency funds. Those are the activity funds, the high school, middle school, any of the clubs. Those aren't actually school district assets, but the school district is custodian of them. Page 27 starts the notes to the financial statement. There's not anything really new in these from last year. Last year, we went over a bunch of changes because of the retirement, the new retirement standards. There's, those are all still in here, but there aren't anything, any new ones that were added for 16. Those go through page 53, I think, 52, it looks like. Page 53 then is your budget-to-actual comparison for the general fund, and that just shows you what were your final budget was and then the actual amounts. And you can see you were a little over, you actually collected more revenue than you anticipated, but you were over in expenses too. And then page 54 and 55 is, 54 through 56 is actually related to the pension. This is just required supplementary disclosures for the pension plan. And then page 57 and 58 is just your other governmental funds, the capital reserve fund and the building improvement fund, just the smaller funds that get rolled up into the other non-major governmental funds. That's it for the financial statements. Is there any questions on the financial statements before we get to the single audit report?
Any questions on financials?
You should've recommended fund balance by the state, you said it was 10%?
It's around 10% of like current year expenditures. It's not, I mean, I wouldn't say it's recommended. That's kinda what we look at as a benchmark, just to see.
And I always thought it was between five, 5% to 8% would be satisfactory.
That's fine, yeah. I mean, eight, I'm not, like I said, under five is when we probably bring it to your attention and say you need to do something about it. But yeah, 10's healthy, five, anything below five wouldn't be very good, but yeah. Eight's not bad at all either, but that's just from our analysis when we look at it. When we were determining risks for the audit, if it's below 10, we might pay more attention to it, and if it's below five, would bring it to your attention.
At the school board association meeting, they used eight, 8% is the bellwether they recommended. Do you remember being?
What you're saying, but eight seemed to be their target.
Well, I think the 8%, why that number is so prominent is that the state only allows you to have 8% in undesignated fund balance if you're gonna have an increase to your millage. So in our case, our entire fund balance is not undesigned, it's probably about 50/50 right now, so.
Yeah.
So we're still have the capacity to raise taxes if necessary, but that's where the 8% really the school board is coming from, is that's the limit on when you can raise taxes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The single audit report then is just your, your report over compliance with federal audit programs and your government auditing standards. There's two opinions in this that we issue. The first is our report over internal control in accordance with government auditing standards, and that begins first page after the table, table contents, page one. You can see we didn't have any, we did have two findings. They were, it's the third paragraph from the top down there. We identified two significant deficiencies in internal control. They were present last year too. They're just related to the federal audit programs, the way the federal funds are coded is one of them, and then the way one of the reports is filled out for cash-on-hand reports is required by the state, the way those are filled out. And they were findings last year, and they're findings again this year, but I'm pretty sure they're gonna be, they're not gonna be findings in 16, 17. It looks like they're under control now, but for the year under audit, they weren't. They were still findings, so we still had to issue the findings, but it looks like they're gonna go away for the next audit, for the 16, 17 audit. So page one and two details that, and then page three through five also details, they're repeated again there because they were related to federal programs. Page three is the federal, the report over internal control, over compliance, and on the schedules, expenditures of federal awards. So those findings are repeated again in there, and they're actually broken out in the back of the report too. If you go to the second, well, it's page 10, I believe. Yeah, page 10 is where they're broken out, and this is basically what the findings are, the criteria, the cause, the condition, and what management's doing to correct them. So they were, like I said, they were two findings. They were from last year. They should be corrected during 16, 17. Page six is your federal expenditure, the federal awards. If you want to pay any attention to that, that's the, you only have 1.2 in federal awards, which is actually a small part of your budget compared to some of the school districts, which is a good thing. That means you don't need as much federal assistance. So you have 1.2 million in federal awards out of about $50 million in total revenues. Page seven is just notes to schedule expenditures of federal awards, and then page nine is your scheduled findings and question costs. And this actually just explains everything about our report. Our auditor report was unmodified. We did have material weaknesses. We did have material weaknesses over federal awards, major programs, and then the identification of the major programs down there for the year. Ended 2000, June 30, 2016, we tested Title I and IDEA, the special ed cluster, as major programs. And both those findings related to both of those programs, so they were affected by the programs, and that was the same as last year. That's why we had to audit them again this year, because once they have a finding one year, they're considered high risk the next year. And then, like I said, page 10 and 11 is just the findings broken out, and then page 12, page 12 is the federal awards. We have to list them again because they were findings under internal control and for federal awards. And then page 13 is the status of the prior audit findings, and you'll see them both listed there. They were the same findings as last year, so you'll see, it says, see finding 2016-1 and 2016-2. So they're findings again this year, but like I said, they should be gone for the 16, 17 audits, so we shouldn't have those again next year. Is there any questions on the single audit report?
Yes, on page nine at the bottom there, can you explain a little bit more, it says auditee qualified as low-risk auditee, and it says no. Shouldn't that be yes, and then if it is, if the answer is, should be yes, then how concerned the school board director should be about that answer?
No, you actually don't qualify as a low-risk auditee because you had findings, so that's not like.
That's what I'm saying. We want the answer to be yes in that section.
Oh, yeah, you want it to be yes, yeah.
Right, so how concerned should we be that it's a no?
Well, to be honest with you, we don't have many that are yes.
Okay.
It's anytime you get a federal audit award finding, you're not gonna be considered low-risk for the next two audit cycles. So because we have those two findings, like next year you won't be a low-risk, and if there's no findings next year or the year after, then the following year you'll be low-risk. And basically, that's just, that determines how much test work we have to do over federal audit programs. So if you were a low-risk auditee, we'd only be required to test 20% of your federal audit, federal expenditures. Because you aren't a low-risk auditee, we have to test 40% of them. It's basically just something, it's a tool that we have to use in accordance with the federal auditing standards as a determination on how much test work we're doing over federal expenditures.
You already answered my next question, so this is a tool for you guys to use.
Yeah.
The next group who would come in and audit us would look at that and say that they would have to audit the 40?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And like we filed, so we filed the federal, the data collection form with the federal audit clearinghouse, so if there was another auditor that came in after us, they would have to go in there and look at the data collection form and see if there were findings in the previous two audit cycles, and then they could determine if it was low-risk or not.
So on your, on your opinion, after talking to management, within two years, do you believe this to be an answered yes?
Yeah, as, I mean, we only have those two findings, and I believe they're gonna go away, so after the next two audit cycles, I believe you will be a low-risk auditee.
Thank you.
My young friend here brought that to our attention. Does that mean we're a high-risk then?
Yeah, I mean, there's only low and high.
We have fund balance of 8%, I don't know how we could, how's that?
This, this is.
It's just about funding.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a federal.
Oh, okay, just the way.
That's why, that's why, I'm gonna fund balance for this, okay.
Oh, yeah, this, yeah, this is just what the federal audit.
Plus, it sounds like we're very low on our federal financing, so you took, instead of the 20%, you took 40% and looked at that very low number, and you still gave us a low rate.
Bless you.
Thank you.
The rating just makes them take the 40%.
Yeah.
Does it ever get higher than 40%? Like you have to look at.
That's the minimum threshold.
20's the norm, 40's what we got. Could you ever go to 60 or 80 if, if your findings are increased?
Well, the way, so the way single audit programs are selected is every program that's over $750,000, you have to audit once every three years. And then the 40 and the 20% come in where that's the minimum you have to get, so we had to test at least 40% of your federal. I think the, the numbers in here, what we actually tested, I believe, we tested 59.29% of your federal wars. If you look on page seven, that's what the total of Title I and IDEA is. 40 was the minimum we had to test.
Okay, so you did actually hit almost 60.
Yeah, and when you test one, like I can't test, Title I might be 50% of your federal expenditures.
You have to test the whole title.
Yeah.
So it gives you that number, whatever it comes out to, but it has to be 40 or above.
Yeah, you have to have the minimum of 40.
Okay.
Any other questions for Brian or Alexis?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for coming on, guys. We'll, I'll let you know if the report's approved next week, and then you can go ahead and file it.
Okay.
All right, thanks very much.
Thanks, Brett. Just to follow up to last week, March 2nd, the evening, 7 o'clock, we had a group of some of the board members, three board members, meet with Protect PT, just to receive some information, and they did a whole presentation for us. It was about two hours, and during the topics of discussion, they covered the following subject matter, emission sources, pollution health effects, health impacts and scientific studies, risks to children, our community needs, and what can we do, which included talking about air monitoring, air filters, further education, parent involvement, and the safety plan. So just different things, and tonight after this meeting, the same group's gonna receive information from Huntley and Humley, but I wanted to make everyone aware of that. And I did, the board members, you couldn't attend, I did pass out what the other board members did receive from Protect PT. Tonight later on, we're gonna ask you in a few moments to approve the sale of the Peetark Building in the amount of $250,000. It was sold by the Baldur's LLC, and basically they're associated with the Pennsylvania, and I hope I could say this right.
Shodacon.
Shodacon Karate Club. So they will be the new owners of the Peetark Building.
Property too.
And Peetark Building and property. So that's kind of exciting news for the district, and it's exciting to have them, the Shodacon, or the, I'm saying?
Shodacon.
Shodacon, karate club.
What's the completion date of June possibly, Brett?
I think Falco may be able to answer that better than I can.
Yeah, right now, because it's a private sale, we have to go through a court approval process, so we'll be presenting a petition, excuse me, a petition to the court for approval. Once that's done, then we can schedule the closing and make that happen. So I would expect that it could be, if we're right now in March, that it should be by, or excuse me, by June.
That's what I thought.
All right, thank you. And we also have one bit of information from Mr. Inglis.
Yes, Ward, if you recall, I did send you all a extensive list of all the charitable donations the school district is involved in, whether it's kids, teachers, administrators, board members, everybody that's involved in any kind of a fundraiser or charitable endeavor. I gave you a list of over 100 events that have taken place over the last year or so. And it just, it was just noteworthy, you know, some, Mr. Matarazik had actually brought it up and said, you know, we got so many kids and so many things going on with some great activities, it'd be, it'd be good to know how many we actually have. And I just surveyed all the principles and thought about the things that we do, and we came up with a list of over 106, 109 items, but ranging from everything. A lot of senior projects that the kids are doing, they're very great projects where kids are doing some wonderful things, you know, whether it's Leukemia Foundation, Giving Tree, Toys for Tots, we just do so many things. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and I gave a copy to Georgia so that she has it as well, but I think it's noteworthy that we have a lot of great things going on here, and a lot of this is driven by the kids. It's not necessarily just teachers and, believe it, they help and, you know, administrators help and all that, but most of this is student-driven, and it wouldn't happen without the kids having a big heart and really opening up and giving like they do. So it's a great, great example of what's happening here in Penn Trafford, so I just thought it was noteworthy, wanted to bring it up.
And that's all I have for information. Next week, under athletics and extracurricular, we're gonna ask you to accept resignations, employee personnel, approve volunteer coaches. Under budget and finance, we're gonna ask you to approve the audited financial statements and single audit for 2015, 2016. Approve the general operating budget for the Westmoreland IU for 2017, 2018. Authorize insurance of the general obligation bond. Under buildings, grounds, and safety, we're gonna actually approve the hourly rate adjustment. Since we have an action item, you need to go to tab two.
And Mr. Leonard, if you would, please present the motion.
That's it, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to approve the agreement of the sale and purchase of Peetark Building in the amount of $250,000.
Second. Second by Mr. Nemec.
Question.
Question by Mr. Costo. A question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all I have for that.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard.
Welcome.
Next week, we won't have anything for employee relations, negotiations, transportation, or food service, but under personnel and curriculum, we're gonna ask you to approve substitute teachers and support personnel, accept retirement resignations, approve leave requests, employee personnel, approve conference requests, approve field trip requests for the cruel classic basketball tournament. Under policy public relations, legislative title two, we're gonna ask you to accept and follow information committee meeting minutes of February 6, 2017. Get final approval for new and revised board policies and administration regulations. Tentatively approve revised board policy and new administration regulation. Appoint a voting delegate to PSBA. Under tax insurance census, we're gonna ask you to exonerate tax collectors for unpaid taxes, turn over to the county. Moving back over to Mr. Stavour.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. No visitor, no visitors signed up to speak tonight, so then I'm going to move for adjournment of the meeting. I have a motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Kachasik.
Second.
Taken by Dr. Costo. Meeting adjourned, 7:47.